Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this formal session of our school board meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 23rd day of September 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President in this school board chamber, or Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Would my colleagues please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? After the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem will be sung by the Salem High School Visual and Performing Arts Academy, Fox Harmonia Ensemble. Their chorus director is Ms. Corbin Pinto. Please join me as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so brightly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight For the ramparts we watch Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say that dark dayhood, where the light shone For the land and of the free And the home of the brave.
Well done. Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. That was fantastic. That was so awesome. All right. Well, some might say it's going to be hard to top that, but I think we've got something that's going to equal that as well. So we now do our favorite part, and that's recognizing students, SROs, teachers, and everything in our division. So, Ms. Dwyer, would you please read our recognition today?
Yes, I will. This evening, the school board has the pleasure of recognizing members of the VB CPS community for their achievements. Our first recognition this evening is for two school resource officers who took extraordinary actions to help one of our students. Please welcome Kellum High School SRO Christopher Chryszenzi and Ocean Lakes High School SRO Cameron Colmer. These two SROs took proactive measure to save a student's life. After receiving a tip about a student who might be in crisis situation, Officer Chryszenzi immediately began investigating and in short order identified where the student lived. He responded to the student's home with Officer Colmer. The officers found the student needed immediate help. As the student was transported, oh, thanks to their swift action, the student received life-saving medical attention and is now connected with resources for ongoing support. As the student was transported to the hospital, the Virginia Beach Police Department's First Precinct Patrol Units stepped in to assist, ensuring the student received quality care and providing security at the hospital. This partnership allowed the SROs to return quickly to their schools, continuing their mission of safety, mentorship, and presence on campus. The case highlights the dedication of our SROs. As both guardians and warriors, they protect our schools not only from outside threats, but also from the unseen struggles our children face. Because of their swift and compassionate response, a life was saved. This incident reminds us that proactive police work is not just about enforcement. It's about compassion, care, and protecting life. Join me in giving a shout out to the officers Chryszenzi and Colmer for their outstanding work.
We wanted to take an opportunity, while it extended to us, to also recognize Officer Chryszenzi and Officer Colmer for their heroic actions that day. I am honored to be here in front of you, but also not surprised. I know the officers that you are and the work that you perform every day. We are incredibly proud of you, and we know that the impact you have on students' lives, but in this occasion, the impact you have on saving student lives. So with that, I wanted to present to you all our department's life-saving medal to Officer Chryszenzi.
This concludes the school board recognitions for this evening.
Okay, we are now on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Vice Chair Weems?
Yes, colleagues, I would like to move item 14C, the budget calendar, from the consent agenda to action tonight so that we can discuss it in more detail.
Okay, so that will now be 15B. Are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and modified, moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the agenda as presented and modified.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented and modified.
Thank you. We are now on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Robertson, we look forward to your report.
Yes, I can read it. So, thank you for this opportunity. First, we'll start with about 400 educators attended our new teacher orientation last month. And tonight, we're going to share a two-minute video with you that shows how these new members of our team are looking forward to their career with Virginia Beach City Public Schools.
At this year's 2025 New Educator Orientation, we're welcoming close to 400 new teachers. Those might be folks new to the division, new to teaching in general, and also new to the division, or new to a content area within our division. We host orientation to create a foundation for a successful school year for our newest folks. They're getting an introduction to the curriculum resources, to the people for whom they can lean on for support in their particular content, who teach the same thing as them. They're beginning to build that foundation of collaboration.
I've been saying, I'm so nervous, but I'm also so excited. This is something I've wanted for so long, so I'm excited to get in there and make a difference. As a first-year teacher, you feel like you're never going to fully know exactly what you're supposed to do starting out. But that's why I feel like this orientation has helped ease some of that anxiety. I'm learning, one, it's okay to be nervous, and I'm not going to know everything from the start.
There's a significant gap in my last time I was teaching. It's refreshing, too, to kind of get back into it and to be one of those veteran teachers, but also, you know, there's been so many positive changes in the curriculum since I left.
I've met teachers from other schools. I've seen people that I grew up with that are now back in the school system. So it's helping to boost my self-esteem a little bit in regards to getting out those first-day jitters and first-teacher jitters. I was amazed at how many people were here. I had no idea we were hiring and transitioning that many teachers into the classroom.
I've learned so much that there will be so much support for me throughout the school year, so it's made me feel a lot more comfortable going into it.
I'm not alone. It's not kind of like, okay, here's your orientation. Now go in your classroom and do your thing. It feels tremendous to have that support, to know the people.
So far, I've been community, helping to bridge connections and just putting us forward in paths that we need to go. They're so thankful and excited to start their school year after they know the kind of support that they're going to have. Sometimes we hear it's a lot of information, and I didn't know how valuable it would all be until my first nine weeks unfolded. But we always hear back that people feel supported, and they're glad to feel supported.
We're glad to support our new talent, and we know these teachers will play an essential role in helping our students succeed in this year and beyond. More than 7,000 people went to the Back to School Care Fair on August 16th at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. This was our largest turnout ever. Those of you who joined me at the event know just how thrilled our students and parents were to learn about school programs and community resources while receiving free books and backpacks. Helping us were more than 80 community and student volunteers and more than 200 partner agencies and school departments. Some other impressive numbers from the event included, we distributed 3,000-plus backpacks and headphones. There were 300 vision screenings completed. 181 students received vaccines. There were 100-plus haircuts provided. We want to offer special thanks to our platinum sponsor, Bayport Credit Union, for supporting this event, which was hosted by the Office of Family and Community Engagement and the Virginia Beach Education Foundation. Our first day back to school was full of energy and excitement across the division. From new faces to familiar ones, students were welcomed with smiles, support, and encouragement. Our school leaders set clear expectations for the year ahead. Principal Shan Bevel said she was thrilled to welcome sixth graders to Bayside Middle School for the first time. New students received an orientation that included a tour of the building, and Ms. Bevel reminded them that wherever they go, they will excel, as long as they keep their tools of success in their toolboxes. Chair Brown, I want to thank you and the rest of the board members for being a valuable part of the first day of school, giving students high-fives and adding to the enthusiasm for the progress we'll see in them this year. And then finally, the annual PTA Leadership Training Institute and Volunteer Kickoff was held September 10th at Corporateland and Middle Schools. Training was provided in fundraising, event planning, social media management, and more. In addition to PTA and PTSA board members, volunteers and community engagement liaisons also participated. The event also included a partner expo, where participants learned how Virginia Beach City Public Schools' community partners can support schools. I'd like to thank the citywide PTA President Tara Campbell and the Office of Family and Community Engagement for supporting parents and giving them a forum to exchange ideas with other volunteers. And thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report.
Thank you. And do you have any recognitions this evening? Okay, thank you. And there are two sets of meeting minutes for approval this evening. The first is the August 27th, 2025 Special School Board Meeting. I call for a motion to approve the minutes as presented, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the August 27th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the meeting minutes from August 27th.
Thank you. We are now on to the September 9th, 2025 meeting minutes. Is there any modifications to those meeting minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for the motion to approve the September 9th, 2025 meeting minutes as presented, moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the September 9th, 2025 meeting minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the meeting minutes from September 9th.
Thank you. The school board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12 public education in Virginia Beach and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section is for the school board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the school board meeting. I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the school board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Madam Chair, before I do that, I wanted to make a note that the online speaker had to cancel this evening. So we'll start our speakers with our student speaker, Hattie Friedman.
Hi, I'm Hattie Friedman. I'm not here to bother you guys about DEI tonight. I'm here to bother you about the Spanish immersion program. I am Class of 27, which means I was the first group to go through Allentown Elementary and Great Neck Middle in Spanish immersion. That program, I spent like eight years of my life. That program meant so much to me. I met lifelong friends. I had so many fantastic teachers from all over. I had Puerto Rico, Peru, probably a couple others, and I'm blanking on. Like, I had so many teachers from all over the place that I learned Spanish from. And as the program continued, so did my Spanish. I was able to travel with it. I went to Costa Rica, and even at second-grade Spanish level, they were still so impressed with my Spanish and glad that I was learning. I was just in Spain. I was able to use my Spanish there. And even I was in Model UN meeting, and a girl didn't really speak great English, and so she needed me to translate for her about what we were doing. So the program has taught me so much, and so to cut it would be such a shame. However, I do agree that, yes, budget cuts, I know, we all warned you about this. Trump was going to do it, whatever. But that Spanish immersion, though, it's such a vital part, and so many kids use it, and it's so helpful. And that, yes, I understand that maybe middle school, the program, move it to VB, keep it to homeschool, whatever. But my thoughts on it is that when I went into sixth grade, my Spanish was so much better than the kids who were taking exploratory or Spanish one. I knew my colors. I knew Rojo was red. I knew Uno dos tres. I knew my stuff. But these kids never even heard of Spanish in their life, couldn't do anything. So that's why I agree with the idea that moving it to a homeschool and having a more like specialized class for it would be beneficial, because then their Spanish would still be able to continue to progress. You'd be able to build on this five years of project, first through fifth, and be able to build on that at a middle school level, but still having the curriculum needed and having a challenge still. Because I knew if I sat, sixth grade me sat in Spanish one with kids who never learned Spanish, I'd have been bored out of my mind. And I probably would have dropped the program altogether, because like, what's the point? And what's the point of not continuing it to middle school? And so either moving into VB and having the program there, trying to centralize it, or having the at-home, or at-your-home-school, whatever, but still. or having the at-home, or at-your-home-school, whatever, but still, either way, I think that is such a vital program, and I implore the board to talk more about it, to learn more about it, to research it, to talk to parents or students like me who have been in Spanish immersion for so long. And like, I was able to take AP Spanish last year as a sophomore. Like, most kids wouldn't have been able to take that. So that's why, like, the Spanish program has meant so much to me in my education. I met lifelong friends through it. I'm probably repeating myself because I didn't have a speech, but it was, it's just been so fantastic. Like, I cannot, I cannot gush about this program enough and how amazing it's been to my education, and how much that has meant to me in, like, middle school, too, even like, yes, I understand history was hard in Spanish. I was at Great Neck, that was really complicated. So having that of only doing, like, the centralized Spanish one, Spanish two, Spanish three class, but yes, please, 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 learn more about this. Do your research before you guys vote and budget.
And that is time. Our next student speaker is Cora Mayo.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Cora. I would like to share what happened in my Zone Elementary School gifted class. My teacher was great. She was very nice, but spent most of her time helping my classmates who couldn't read. I was bored. A parent said my teacher did a great job improving their reading. My mom had a meeting at my old school. That meet, after that meeting, they stuck me on my Chromebook all day when I was seven years old. Mrs. Brown on the school board helped us and took the reports. My new school is much harder, and my teachers are excellent. My parents pay a lot of tuition. I've gone to three different schools in four years in Virginia Beach. My new school, my new school's gifted cluster program is very different than my Zone school. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Our next speakers will be Mindy Friedman, Cody Connor, and then Kim Mayo.
Good evening. Sorry about my voice. I did three nights of fish at the Hampton Coliseum this weekend. First, I want to wish all the Jewish families in our division shanat hola, a happy and healthy new year. Today is Rosh Hashanah, one of the holiest days in Judaism. I was disappointed to see a school board meeting for tonight, and even more disappointing that VB schools' social media did not acknowledge the holiday at all. For context, Jewish holidays start at sundown the night before, which may explain why my children often find themselves with tests, projects, or events scheduled on our holidays year after year. In recent years, our division had made some progress in respecting major religious holidays, but that progress seems to have slipped. I guess that's what happens when you eliminate DEI. It also underscores the need for VB CPS to adopt a religious and cultural observance calendar. But that's a conversation for another time. I shouldn't be here tonight, but in Judaism we are taught it's a mitzvah or a good deed to stand up for what you believe in, and I believe in the dual-language immersion program. When I saw the presentation on the agenda for last meeting, my heart sank. My first thought was, they can't get rid of the Spanish immersion program at middle school. Enrolling our kids, our children in the program from the very beginning in Allentown was the best educational choice my husband and I ever made for them. Both our kids have completed DLI through elementary and middle school, and I can say without hesitation, it has been rigorous, meaningful, and deeply rewarding. These proposed changes no longer direct my family or my children as they are in high school now, but I'm here to advocate for preserving and strengthening the DLI program at the middle-school level by consolidating it at one location. Bringing all DLI students together will make the program more sustainable and ensure they continue to learn at a true immersion level. However, I know budget issues are real, and if y'all decide to end DLI at the middle school level and return it to the Zone schools, I urge you to at least provide a immersion-level Spanish one-through-three class for these students. They have worked far too hard and for far too long to be placed back with peers who are just beginning their learning of the language. The research is clear. Students who study another language think more critically, achieve more across subjects, and even strengthen their English skills. Bilingual students also score higher on tests and are better prepared for the global workforce. Honestly, who wouldn't want that for their children? I encourage you to not only visit the elementary schools, but the middle schools that offer the DLI program. Please do not give up on these students. DLI is a wonderful program that means so much to the community it serves. Let's work together to adjust and strengthen it. Please do not dismantle it. I worry this could be the first of many cuts across our division, and it's our students that will ultimately bear the consequences. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cody Connor, then Kim Mayo, then Lisa Weiss.
Brought you another song today. Hope you like it. Targetting by in our country today, and not gonna make it on minimum wage. Hate self much better than hope. Making martyrs of monsters and saints out of lies, just for someone to blame for starting this fire. Don't put it out, 'cause those ashes are worth more than gold. And we race to the edge on a paved little road. Who cares that it's there? Hit the gas and over we go. Fall feels like flying, only dust out the kills. If you're worried about that, just take two of these pills. Hold your guns close, tell yourself this is not what it seems. Close your eyes to the truth and get lost in American dreams. The DOD has turned into the Dow, and the price of life has been trending down, keeps getting lower each day. Slavery is illegal unless you're in jail, but freedom's a crime now, so everyone fails. There's no safe place to stay. Too late for running away. So we race to the edge on a paved little road. Who cares that it's there? Hit the gas and over we go. Fall feels like flying, only dust out the kills. If you're worried about that, just take two of these pills. Hold your guns close, tell yourself this is not what it seems. Close your eyes to the truth and get lost in American dreams. Close your eyes to the truth and get lost in American dreams.
Our next speaker is Kim Mayo, Lisa Weiss, and then Omar Hegazi.
Good evening. I'd like to discuss gifted ed and expanding ODS beyond their campus. This is not a partisan issue. I appreciate comments made at your July retreat. Thanks, Chair Brown, for repeating my suggestion about retesting rising ODS sixth graders. Mrs. Dwyer for asking what is giftedness, a profound question, and Ms. Rogers for sharing your personal experience. We need to think big picture. Dr. Green distinguished herself for her clear position of fiscal responsibility and repurposing the ODS building. You showed a vision to improve VB schools for all and an authenticity with your remarks on segregation. Affirmative action, sending one kid to ODS from every school was administration's Band-Aid fix to appease. ODS no longer represents the highest-scoring gifted kids. Our current model no longer serves our gifted community. We've outgrown our one gifted school, a nice problem to have. If I were an elected official hoping to reelect it, or superintendent, I'd focus on parents of gifted kids not at ODS, the majority, not a small group with a sense of entitlement. While the opinion is mixed on what the solution is, we want our tax money towards our own gifted children. The hybrid model Virginia Beach uses will never work, according to national expert Dr. Plucker. By law, VB schools should be offering programming to everyone, which our current model does not allow. It's well-documented, there is not fair access or equitable services across the division. ODS has been the subject of lawsuits, and I'm concerned parents could do more. ODS takes roughly 57% of our $20 million gifted budget while serving just 11% of the gifted population per year July 24th retreat. One solution Ms. Rogers outlined to ensure all gifted students are serviced appropriately without the massive costs associated with ODS is bringing ODS to neighborhood schools. We could have maybe five gifted schools spread out across the division and an option to attend. This would cut current costs and allow our kids to stay close to home. Academies are roughly $1 million to run versus $13 million for ODS, it was stated. In conclusion, the teacher's insurance matter has reminded us that fiscal restraint is so important. Let's refresh our gifted programs. Let's fix the mistakes of the past and implement a win-win solution. I plan to post about this more. Email kimmayo79@gmail.com if you're a parent watching and want to explore options.
That is time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Weiss, then Omar Hegazi, and then Heather Sype. Lisa Weiss? Omar Hegazi?
Good evening, School Board. My name's Omar, and I want to talk about how we, as a city, can respond to school shootings, God forbid they happen here. The unfortunate reality of school shootings is two things. One, they're never going to be 100% preventable. Number two is that first responders, it's not just law enforcement and EMS, it's the surviving students and the teachers. In the mid-'90s, the military adopted the Tactical Casualty Combat Care Solution, commonly referred to as TCCC. It trained service members to be able to stabilize patients prior to their arrival at the emergency room, thus increasing the chance of survival. This training is basic, it's effective, and it can help reduce the number of casualties. Unfortunately, it's time that we must pass this knowledge on to teachers and to students that want to volunteer. Affordable safe rooms also seem to no longer be part of the discussion, and I'm assuming it's because of the $50,000 price tag that it came with. For, I implore the city, we need to act and apply the reality of what the situation is in our country. Number one, we need to offer TCCC training to teachers, along with their mandated CPR and AED training. TCCC should also be offered to students in sixth through 12th grade. I can tell you from, from personal experience, some of my friends in the military and law enforcement, they've already taught this to their, to their children. Procurement of 10 TCCC trauma kits for all 86 schools, and the procurement of the ballistic safe rooms, such as KT's Security Solutions that was explored last year by Mayor Dyer. And last but not least, mandated policies by the city to backfill school resource officers who are absent due to court, training, or on leave. As a former officer, I can tell you that it, that's a tough ask due to the constraints of the, the law enforcement. They're overworked, they're underpaid, and they're understaffed. I'm not a salesman. I'm not here to sell you anything. I'm a federal investigator. I'm a former law enforcement officer. I'm a combat veteran. This stuff works. And like, like I said earlier, unfortunately, I think we've reached a time in our country where we have to pass this on to our teachers, and it works. The curriculum hasn't changed since the mid-'90s. It's effectively stayed the same. You can teach a teacher how to apply a tourniquet, apply a chest seal, apply gauze, and that can stabilize a student or another teacher so they can make it to the hospital and reduce the number of casualties. In your inboxes right now is a detailed breakdown of everything that I discussed this evening, along with a cost breakdown. So if you check your email inboxes, I would love some sort of reply in the coming weeks. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Heather Sype, then Alan Wakefield, then Alberto Macalas.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Williams, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Sype, and I am the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I'm here this evening to remind you that employees of Virginia Beach City Public Schools are still facing an important decision about their health care that no human being should have to make. Open enrollment should be a time to decide which health insurance plan best fits your family's medical needs, not a time to decide if you can even afford to retain health insurance because the premiums have doubled. Earlier this evening, many of you expressed concerns over student meal debt and were seeking ways to ensure all students receive a hot meal. Your employees need you to be equally concerned about whether the cafeteria staff can afford to stay with VB CPS when the compensation benefits in neighboring districts exceeds what you are paying them. You also heard about the many fine programs we offer students, particularly at the high school level, to serve their needs and ensure they have a wide range of opportunities to explore. You need to be equally concerned about the teachers who are endorsed to instruct these programs, then they will be staying in this division after this school year. Bus drivers, maintenance and custodial staff, teacher assistants, security, office associates, administrators. This division is nothing without the staff who ensure our students get the very best. They deserve the best compensation. VB CPS employees should not have to choose between better pay and affordable health care premiums. They deserve both. They deserve to be ranked as high on the pay comparison as they are in SOL scores. They deserve to be in a position where they feel valued. You're going to have to put in the work to find a solution that will be effective January 1st, 2026. VB CPS staff deserve to actually see their raises and not have them wiped out by premium increases. Do the work. Have the difficult conversations about budget and revenue streams. Show the employees of Virginia Beach City Public Schools that you do indeed value them and that retention is an actual goal. No more lip service. They deserve more. Now, a few words about immersion language. I am a bilingual adult who learned my second language through full immersion. Nothing can compare to that level of language acquisition. It is a question, it is without question the best means for learning a language. I am also a world languages teacher who has taught everything from the nine-weeks exploratory to AP. The students who have done immersion in elementary cannot be placed in the same Level One course as a first-time language learner. Their needs are more closely aligned to the coursework that is prepared for our heritage speakers. Curriculum already exists that will appropriately challenge them. Send them to VB Middle, where they can have immersion, or send them to their homeschool with coursework that is appropriate for what they have learned through immersion. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Wakefield, and then Alberto Macalas.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will try to compare an event 40-plus years ago to, well, tonight. Welcome back in town to my second date at Mamont Park in Richmond. Barbara suggested we need to get something to eat after our visit. I replied, "A delicious snack by the car would be perfect." To her amazement, we spread out a few things. She was curious and asked, "What was covered up?" I said, "A homemade blackberry pie from scratch." She said, "Wow, you can cook, too." Why did I bring this story to your attention? Well, you have $200,000, plus or minus, to spend on a new school. I had $10 to buy some gas for my car and pie ingredients for my date. I thought about your conversations at the last meeting about other options. Partnerships was one, but the bottom line to me is the money, the funds are really not available. Schools age as soon as they are built. Many others are in need of remodeling, repair, and/or maintenance. And in the near future, with technology and AI, we will have major changes in how education is delivered. So you have wants and needs that coincide with each other. I had a want to impress my date, but also a need to have gas to get there and back with a total of $10. I accomplished my mission as planned, as a Marine would say. Are you able to accomplish yours without adding more short and long-term debt to the citizens of Virginia Beach? Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Alberto Macalas. Alberto Macalas? Okay, Madam Chair, our last speaker's not here, so that ends our public comments for this evening. this evening.
Okay, thank you. We are now on to our information agenda, and our first presentation is the interim financial statements for June unaudited, July, and August 2025, and we welcome Daniel Hopkins, Director of Office of Business Services.
Good morning, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, I'm sorry, good evening. Just woke up. Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board members, Dr. Robertson. I'd like to start this presentation today to go over a few key points about the financial statements and what to look for as you read them. If you go to your statements, B3 and B4, and that would be your statement of revenues for June, that'll help you follow my presentation. Hopefully you have them there. First you'll notice, are you all there? There should be a B3 and, alright. So first you'll notice there are percentages on the statements. These represent actual versus budget. This is a key measure on how we're performing according to our approved budget. For revenues, being over projections is positive. Of course, we're getting more revenue. For expenditures, being under budget is what we always try to do. But when we do receive revenue, revenue does not come in all at once, and not all revenue sources are received at the same schedule. State revenue is one of our largest funding sources, and it generally comes in 24 equal installments starting in July. However, some state allocations begin later. For example, infrastructure and operations per pupil for $15 million, and K3 class size reduction for $6 million, these revenues don't start coming in until January in 11 equal installments. Other state revenue lines may come in, may not come in until May or even June. We track every line item closely to ensure by year-end that all funds are received and according to the state budget. If any line item show less than 100%, it's usually because state revenue and adjustments to the budget during the year. It's also worth noting that state revenue accounts for about 47% of our total revenue. We keep the board informed about any changes in the state budget, and in context, we didn't receive a final calc tool until June 2025. Sales tax is part of the state budget, and this is based on our actual sales tax collections. It's important to note that sales tax, if it exceeds projections, the state basic aid is reduced based on the composite index of .4138. That means that our state basic aid will reduce by 41% of the extra state sales tax. If state sales tax coming lower, that would mean that the state basic aid will increase by 41%. And in some cases, they may hold harmless allowing us to keep any surplus. This variability is a normal part of the state budgeting process. Federal revenues can be highly unpredictable. Last year, this is the first time we ever received federal impact aid in the year that they belonged. Federal Impact Aid Office at the federal government would like to keep this trend, but they're totally reliant on the federal government to pass the appropriation bill to allow them to pay us. Fortunately, we have a good staff that closely monitors these payments, but there's still no guarantee as to when we'll actually receive them. Local revenues come in from city transfers. Since the schools have a bank, have no bank account, all funds flow through the city treasurer's office. The city transfers our portion through journal entries, spread out over 12 equal installments throughout the year. At year-end, we verify that 100% of these funds are received except for any amount reverted back to the city. Other revenue accounts for just .5% of the total revenue. Many sources here are consistent, however, larger one-time sources such as sale of property and lost and damaged technology can vary significantly from year to year. And now let's move to expenditures and encumbrances. By law, expenditures and encumbrances must remain under budget. About 85% of our expenditures are payroll and benefits, which are distributed fairly evenly throughout the entire year. Non-personnel costs follow typical spending patterns as the previous year. For example, annual software licenses are often paid at the beginning of the fiscal year. For fiscal end June 30th, we don't officially close these books until August 15th. That's because we required to accrue any payments into the prior year, and some invoices might not arrive until late July. So this concludes the overall financial statements, and I hope this provided a little clear information. Now I'd like to get into the interim financial statement presentation.
Ms. Melnick?
Just keep going. Oh, sorry. So now for the interim financial statements. For the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, the overall final revenue trend was favorable with an actual over-budget amount of approximately $10.7 million. The Commonwealth of Virginia revenue source was favorable with an actual over-budget of approximately $4.7 million or 101.2% of budget. This is mainly due to the SOQ bonus of $6 million and the reduction of state basic aid of $1.5 million. State sales tax revenue was favorable with an actual over-budget of approximately $2.8 million. This increases why we had a reduction in state basic aid based on our composite index of approximately 40%. The federal government revenue source was favorable with an actual over-budget of approximately $2.8 million or 118.7%. This is mainly due to the increase in impact aid payments. Other revenue sources were favorable with an actual over-budget of approximately $415,000. This increase is made up of various revenue sources such as the propane bus rebate, fees on damaged technology, indirect cost to grants, and reduction in the stop-arm enforcement. The next graph illustrates a total revenues by major source in fiscal year 2025. The city of Virginia Beach contributed 51.1%. Commonwealth of Virginia, 37.8%. State sales tax was 9%. Federal government, 1.7%, and other sources, it was 0.4%. The final expenditure trend for fiscal year 2025 was favorable in all categories. The overall remaining unspent unencumbered balance was $27.8 million. The next graph illustrates total expenditures incurred in fiscal year 2025 by category. Instructional category comprised of 69.7%. Operations and maintenance, 11.6%. Pupil transportation, 5.3%. Technology, 4.6%. Administration attendance and health, 4.4%. And debt service, 4.4%. As presented on Schedule B1 of your documents, you'll find a summary of the reversion back to the city general fund. With revenue surplus of 10.7% and the remaining unspent unencumbered balance of 27.8% and the reversion of the school athletic funds of $344,000 and Green Run Collegiate of $391,000, with all adjustments in prepaid items, the total amount of the reversion back to the city is $38.1 million. The revenue that comprised of the city and school board revenue sharing formula on a preliminary basis came in over budget. Our share of this surplus is $7.5 million. The budget development staff is currently working on potential future uses of these funds, which are to be presented to the school board on October 14th. The revenue sharing formula in these figures are presented unaudited and subject to change. And July and August interim financial statements are included in the board documents this evening. They are being presented as Virginia State Code. However, these are abbreviated statements that are not, and they have no salaries or benefits for 10-month employees, so these abbreviated statements are not as meaningful or comparable as the financial statements that will be presented for September. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be glad to take any questions.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay. I really appreciate this, I really learned a few things tonight, like, I guess you don't really think about it, but we don't have a bank account. I guess I never thought about that, because I just, you know, I don't know. So that was very interesting. The other thing is, for the public to understand that our budget is not black and white, right? There's a lot of gray matter, and you talked about the fluctuation of funds that we have, like the reduction in state basic aid due to something else. And so I think it's important that people understand that it's, this is not just a sum of money that doesn't change at all. So that's probably some of the hardest stuff that we deal with just in planning our budget and how sales tax pays, plays a role. Took me 11 years to get here. So you did mention, here's my question, that we received the calc tool in June of 2025. When do we typically receive the calc tool?
Typically, in the past couple of years?
Yeah.
Has been June. But before that, I have to believe it was like March or April, but you can answer.
Yeah, so you'll realize when you think about the budget process, and that's why we're kind of giving this information now, so as we get ready to go into budget, it kind of makes some connection, we hope. So you know we have to pass the approved budget by May 15.
Right.
So depending on when the governor comes in and the General Assembly finally finishes what they're going to do initially, we typically don't have that information final when we're trying to approve our budget for the next fiscal year. So what happens is, once General Assembly finishes and governor approves, it's typically after we get a May 15 approved budget at city council, and then we get a final calc tool that has, then we have to go back and amend, and then we do come back before the board with the additional funds. Usually we apply them to compensation at that point because we're trying to, that's usually what the direction of that additional funding is. But as Dan indicated, we don't, we haven't been in the last few years getting that final calc tool, because the General Assembly continues to go back and forth with the governor a little bit.
Okay, with all the vetoes and, okay, so, which also explains why your job is never done. It's 12 months a year, and so I thank you for all of that hard work. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I will add to what you were talking about. The financial statements that you have in front of you have the approved budget of the school board.
Okay.
And not the adjusted budget on June 5th, so that's what you are looking at.
Okay, perfect, thank you for that.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay, so in your conversation, Ms. Pate, with Mrs. Melnick, I guess it leads me to ask, why, if we don't have everything approved, why do we then, like, we have to pay our staff? But you said that we usually have the final, you know, numbers go to paying our staff. Why do we put, wait for that monies to be, why are we waiting for that money? You know what I'm saying? Like, why are we not?
I hope I understand what you're saying. So when we go through that process by code, we have to have an approved budget for the next fiscal year by May 15.
And I get that.
And we may not have all of the information that's coming out of the state government.
Right.
So what happens is, we balance with what we have, and back and forth with you all giving you the information that we have. So we just, we have to balance with what we have, and then if we get the additional funds, which we monitor really closely after that, then we know we have to come back and present to you all the additional funds that have become available to us, if that's the case. And then we actually say, we give you recommendations on what we could spend on, which is typically...
And I'm just thinking back to this past year where we did not give our instructional staff, like, the raise until after that came.
Because of the additional funds that are coming in.
But why do we not put those raises and things with the funds we have and have other things wait for that? You see what I'm saying?
So you're saying do it, the compensation all in front and then hold off on non-personnel?
Yes, that's, why do we do that?
I think, I don't know that I have a great answer for that, because we come to the board with that information.
Right.
We have information that comes from Segal that helps us with what we can afford to give different levels of raises based on the work that they do, and then we present that to you all, then we have to have programs that are in place.
Right.
So I don't know that there's, it's just always, and I don't want to say that, it's just the way we've done things to where compensation is what we think we can afford while still having to take care of some other non-personnel items as well.
Okay, only because I want our staff, let's just say that, like, reading the room, I want our staff to feel like they're important to us and that they are our priority. And sometimes, even though we know money is coming, our staff having to wait to get, to see what they're going to get second, does not make them feel important, which is why I'm asking these questions.
So, and I think you have to think when you get ready to go through that process. I don't think there's any code or anything that prohibits us, but if you get to that point and you put all that money that's available at the time that we have to approve into compensation, and then that money doesn't happen, then you're going to have some other decisions I think you might need to make.
Right.
And so that is just, we try to make a balance between trying to do one thing.
Right, and I understand that, but then if you think about this, if we don't get the money we think we're going to get, guess who doesn't get it? It's our staff. So that's why I'm saying, like, is, perhaps we should think about how we do these things.
And I think that's why we really want to try to inform the board as much as possible about the process.
Which I like.
And try to be in front of you more so that we can give you that information and let you ask questions and give you the information you need to make those decisions.
Yeah, and I just, like, I think especially last year, we stressed a lot about giving the staff raises and making sure that they felt like that they were important, and I think even just the way it's presented, not that it, you know, you guys have already done it that way, but coming from the lens of they feel like we don't matter, they wait for us to get our raise second, and maybe that's a shift that we need to make.
I just have one question. You gave us a lot of information, and I think it may be useful to have some of this in writing. Do you think you could give what you said?
Yes, I can.
Email that to the board? Thank you. All right, well, I don't see any other additional questions. It was good information, I just want to be able to really, like, analyze and absorb it the rest of the way, so thank you very much for that.
Do you want the first part of the, just the first part?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll do that.
I appreciate that. We are now on to Staffing Up for Success 25-26 Opening of School Update. We welcome Dr. James Avelia, 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 I'm sorry, I'm trying, Abala, I'm trying. Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention, and, thank you. I only have one name on here, so, sorry. And Darnita Trauma.
Hello, good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. As a follow-up to our summer staffing update delivered on August 12th, this evening, we are presenting a school-based staffing update as of Monday, August 25th, the first day of school. Joining me this evening is Dr. James Abala, Coordinator of Recruitment and Retention, and at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Abala.
During the August summer staffing presentation, 57 full-time instructional vacancies were reported, 31 of which were classroom vacancies. A classroom vacancy refers to the absence of a full-time teacher of record who is directly responsible for supporting students. At the opening of the 25-26 school year, there were 14 full-time classroom vacancies. This reflects 11 fewer than at the start of the previous school year, and a 61% decrease in vacancies over the past three years. percent decrease in vacancies over the past three years. Of the fourteen instructional vacancies on the first day of school, the open positions included teachers in second, third, and fourth grades, English, Health and P.E., Latin, Math, Social Studies, Spanish, and Technology Education. All full-time instructional vacancies were covered by long-term substitutes, with some preparing for a provisional license, site-assigned substitutes, or certified teachers awaiting replacement before transitioning to a new role after accepting a promotion. Special education continues to represent a critical staffing need. During the summer staffing presentation, there were seventeen identified vacancies in special education. On the first day of school, thirteen of these positions remained unfilled. The division continues to receive new applications for non-instructional school-based positions. At the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, there were thirty-five non-instructional full-time vacancies, which is two less than on the first day of, of school last year. The non-instructional vacancies include positions such as teacher assistants, security assistants, clinic assistants, and school nurses. Turning attention to our operational support areas, custodial services, food services, and transportation, progress continues when compared to last year, while also identifying areas that require focused recruitment efforts. Custodial one vacancies remain steady at twenty-nine positions, showing no change from the previous year. Additionally, food service vacancies decreased by thirty-four cafeteria assistants. In transportation, there were seven bus driver vacancies. Routes were either combined or covered by a second bus run. There were thirty-two bus assistant vacancies, which is three fewer than on the first day of school for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. To better support staff and address their family needs, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the school division began waiving student tuition for full-time employees who reside outside of Virginia Beach. Since then, participation in the tuition-free program has grown steadily, with more employees choosing to enroll their children in VBCPS schools each year. This growth highlights not only the program's value to employees, but also its role in strengthening recruitment and retention efforts by positioning VBCPS as an employer of choice. The progress in staffing, recruitment, and retention reflects the collective vivid to ensuring every student begins the school year with the support they need. While challenges remain, the strategies in place are moving the division forward, and continued collaboration will strengthen these efforts even further. At this time, we are happy to address any questions you may have.
Ms. Rogers? Thank you so much for your presentation. I totally appreciate it. Couple of questions. I think the second slide, I'm looking on my computer. Um, the instructional vacancies, do we have the number of those split between Title One schools and non-Title One? Because I know that we've talked about that being more difficult, is to sometimes staff those schools. Do we know, like, what the split is, by any chance?
You're asking for the vacancies? The vacancies current, or vacancies as of the twenty-fifth, the first day of school?
As of the first day of school. Like, what is our split between our Title One and our non-Title One schools, as to what our vacancies are?
So we're going to follow up with a memo that captures, um, this presentation. We will try our best to respond to that question. We'll respond to all questions in that memo as well, and we'll see if we can go back and get those Title One schools that had vacancies and break that out for you.
Okay. And then, uh, the non-instructional vacancies, that includes, you said TAs, is that also with our special education TAs? Because that's also very hard, difficult. And do we know of our non-instructional, how much are special education, and how much are not, on that slide?
Out of which slide is?
It's the non-instructional vacancies. The orange one.
So again, we chunk this by, by level. We can drill down, and I can go back to the first day of school.
Totally fine, if you want to just give those.
And see what we can get for you.
No worries.
And we will embed it in, in that memo.
Okay. And then for your special education, for your instructional staff, is this an increase or a decrease from last year, or about the same? Do we know? You'll get those to me? That's okay.
So, as of the first day of school, and I know Dr. Myers-Dobbs is in the back, so, um, I'm going to, it's similar.
Similar.
Right. So, we'll get, we will get that, and we have broken that out again as well, so we'll make sure we put that information and highlight that.
Okay. My last comment is our tuition-free program. I love that, that that is part of a, a recruitment tool. However, is there a plan in place? Should we need to change that because of budget, because of whatever? Do we have a plan in place that, where we would be able to communicate the need for a change to our staff well in advance before our upcoming school year? Should this need to change?
It's a policy, Mrs. Rogers. We'd have to amend the policy at the PRC, so it'll take us a little.
Okay. That's, I, I just want to make sure that should something happen, it would be a policy, though, and then we would have to let everybody know. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
To Mrs. Rogers' point, gosh, some of us will remember that one mom who came, who taught for us, and what her children were going to have to go through every year to get here, the, the boat, the, I mean, it was like trains, planes, and automobiles. Um, and it's, it, it, every time we talk about this, my heart breaks, because I know what she paid, and she was a loyal employee. And it was the year after her kid, I could cry, her kid graduated, we stopped. And it's such a gift for our teachers, and they, and, and that should always remain, my opinion. But I want to first give you giant kudos, um, for the efforts that you, you put out to, to find these amazing staff members. Just, it's so amazing. And I of, I often reference the, um, you'll remember, the file cabinets upstairs on the third floor, full of teacher resumes, and how we never wanted to be in the file cabinet. Um, we just wanted to be in a school. And we had that, but we also didn't offer what we do now. And for a division with a Cheesecake Factory menu, we're doing pretty darn well.
We are.
Yeah.
And thank you for those comments, but, um, Mrs. Melnick, I have to say, it takes the village.
Yes, it does.
And here's our village. Um, so, school-based staff, so we appreciate that.
We recognize that. We know, I, I, I see commercials, I see the vans driving around the city. I mean, I know you are on location at, at, at different schools you're recruiting. I get it. Um, but thank you, and thank you for, for hiring the creme de la creme, always. Our people are just really amazing. My one question for you is, the bus assist, bus assistant number is a little high. And I'm assuming that is most often on a special education bus? Or?
Mr. Freeman is saying yes.
Okay. And so what, what do we do, um, when we have those extra needs, and we're?
So, from the human resources, um, side of it, we host our hiring events. In fact, we are in the planning stages of getting a support staff hiring expo in the works. So the human resources side of the house, we partner with, um, transportation, and if Mr. Freeman wants to add any additional information, I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah, so I think your basic question is, on any given day, if a bus assistant is not available?
Today.
What happens? So, Mr., uh, I will defer to Dr. Myers-Dobbs for the greater details of this, but in the IEP, it's indicated by the parents whether there's, it's required that a bus assistant be there?
Right.
Or whether there's flexibility if a bus assistant is available that day to make adjustments.
Okay.
So that's kind of the high-level answer to your question, and, and we make it work. Dr. Myers-Dobbs, do you have anything to add to what I just said, or clarify?
Yes. We held IEP meetings each year to discuss this, just to let the parent know, like, if this happens, here's the options. Some of the schools are great about, you'll have administrators get on the bus, you'll have buses that circle back. But we know that's not always the case, that we say to the parent, what do you want us to do? Would you like us to call you to let you know the assistant isn't available today? Are you going to pick the child up? Do you want us to call you and let you know the assistant is available, but the student's going to go on the bus? So we've had those conversations, just to be transparent about some of the situations we've been in with staffing.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing. I don't really have a question, but just wanted to publicly acknowledge, um, looking through the presentation, the year-over-year improvements, and so that does speak, I think, so much to your team, to the division, and just the, uh, I don't know, the good work you're doing. I mean, I, you see instructional vacancies decreasing and everything, you know, going, those numbers getting smaller and smaller. So I do think, you know, publicly acknowledging your, your great hard work is, it's, you know, you see the results of what you're doing. And if I recall correctly, we had a presentation a little bit ago with a great visual marketing campaign. So I know the results are, next year, we're going to see zeros across the line. But I'm excited to see, you know, this is, there's continued growth and iteration in each year, to see, you know, great quantified improvements. So I just want to take time and acknowledge you all's good work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cummings. Great team.
Vice Chair Williams?
Job well done. I mean, this is just, just great news. And I know that you, that you all have worked so hard, and I, you know, share in the excitement of my colleagues, and just want to congratulate you, and thank you so much. Um, these numbers are, are really unbelievable. Um, it's unfortunate that at times we hear kind of, no one's going to come to Virginia Beach, everyone's leaving, and these numbers do not prove that to be true. So because of your hard work, and because of all the advantages that we do have for our employees, the resources that we have, and, and I'm a teacher now, I've taught in three divisions here locally, and I heard that when I was teaching in other divisions, like, wow, Virginia Beach, I can't believe that y'all have that, or I can't believe you do this, and y'all are so lucky. And, and so it's just great news, and let's continue so that we can be at zero next year, as, as my colleague said. But that's, but this is truly awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Felton?
Chairwoman Brown. I'd just like to say thank you for all that you're doing, and what's, what's really working, and how we're advertising. But one of the things that really spoke out to me when I attended the, uh, Back to School Care Fair on August sixteenth, we literally had a real bus in the convention center, sitting there, and the, uh, students and the, uh, maybe initiative, uh, employees were examining our buses. I thought it was a good advertisement thing that we did at the, uh, Care Fair, and, uh, TJ was there explaining everything to them. But the, and, and, and keep, keep up the, uh, great advertisement. We look good. Thank you so much, on TV. And when I see it, and I think, yes, because we're doing good. But my one question to you, um, the background check for our bus drivers, are they still extensive? Is this one of the things that's causing us a peak off from getting them to come in? And how, and how is that background check now, um, given?
So, um, the background check remains constant, all HR views those, but one of the things that we're looking at, uh, related to, uh, hiring bus drivers, so as, as we've talked about many times, for this category of employees, often just getting through the process can be challenging. And, uh, one of the things that we were talking about earlier is, there's a requirement for three references for us to be able to proceed through, and there, there are candidates that are in the system that don't have that. So, um, what we've been having is conversations within our team for us reaching out to those candidates, to encourage them that, hey, this is probably the last step that you need to meet, uh, to be able to have a fully developed application, and us to be able to get you into training. So I know that wasn't what you were asking. You were asking about what are the barriers of, uh, being able to get qualified candidates in the door, and that's really one of the areas, not so much the background check part of it, because that's a required part, it's a very important part, to keep our, uh, our entire process tight and safe. Uh, but we are trying to look at where are the elements that we can support people to be able to, uh, get them across the finish line, so we can get them into training.
Mr. Freeman, thank you for that detailed explanation, but I do know that those background checks are very important, with the thing that we see.
Ms. Felton, they're set by state law.
And I, I get that.
Although the state law did change a couple of years ago.
Right.
It's still, we're required to follow that. Unlike the city, which, city can make, make some exceptions, because the population we work with, they, everybody has to pass that. We can't accept that.
And I'm not deterring that. I want them to stay in place. I want us to do that because it's important, which is one of the things that we hear in other divisions. I do want those background checks to stay there, and we work them as just that, I get maybe a conversation from individuals, say, I did go, I'm still waiting my background check, could not wait, I'm going somewhere else. That's the only reason I asked the question. It's not to eliminate those, for God's sake, no. Keep that on board, it's just that, that is one of the things that I hear, that going in, trying to get on, on the bus, even when they have the, am I saying right, CDL?
Yes.
They have the CDLs and everything, they said, just couldn't get in because it took so long for the background check.
And I'd say, again, due to the nature of our business, there are layers, and so we do extensive background checks, CPS, um, verification checks, because of the population that we serve. So it may be a little bit of a weight, but different cases. So there are always different components and different cases for each individual.
Just want to make the, uh, public aware of that. I'm not deterring that. Please keep the background check. Every, um, every program in the city of Virginia Beach that I had to deal with in working with children, I had to do a background check, and I think it's been about four of those. Every, they have their background check. And I said, this is what I have to tell them, that it's important that we do that, just be patient, and just hang in there, because it's important that we continue to do the background check on our employees that we employ to be around and work with our children. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. And, and I don't have a question, I just have, uh, accommodation. So, so thank you, commendee. And, and I think for our viewing public, um, if you don't, uh, have a clear understanding of what it takes to end up being fully staffed, um, how hard this department works, all the coordinators, assistants, uh, and, like, they are here late tonight, but this is typical for our HR department. They're always here, ensuring that schools are staffed, and as a former, uh, employee who had the honor of having to work with some of, uh, these team members, um, they're going to make sure we have great matches. It's not a matter of just putting a body in front of students. They want it to be a good fit for the school community, uh, as well as with the students, uh, especially, you've heard a lot of discussion this evening on our specialty programs. So it takes a lot from a staffing perspective to get schools open, as well as continuing when there's a vacancy, uh, throughout the school year. And I think Dr. Robertson, or Dr. Trotman, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're probably one of the few school divisions that don't have an enormous amount of provisionally, uh, licensed teachers, so I want to give you accolades for that as well. And, you know, people may not, that's a big deal, uh, when you do not have a lot of staff who are provisionally, uh, licensed. The good news is, um, I, I know that Virginia Beach, when we do have provisionally licensed staff, they're not far from being, uh, fully licensed, which a lot of other school divisions cannot say. And that's because our HR department works so hard to make sure that we do get the best candidates. So thank you all.
Thank you.
And I don't have any questions either, um, but I do want to thank you guys. When I compare what we're doing statewide, um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but our numbers and our percentages of vacancies are much, much lower in Virginia Beach, um, and that is because of the hard, hard work that you guys do. And so I just want to make sure that I tell you all that I appreciate your work as well. So, thank you.
One point nine eight percent is what it was.
It's one point nine?
Eight. They rounded up to two percent on the state website, but that was our vacancy rate, um, for teachers last year.
That is a lot less than average, though, correct?
That is. State and region two, the states, so, I just wanted to shout that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. We are now on to the consent agenda. We have policy three dash two-three, policy three dash two-five, policy three dash two-six, policy three dash four-two, policy seven forty-four, and four oh-three B Oversight Committee. Are there any objections to the school? school board voting on the consent agenda as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Vice Chair Weems. I call for the vote to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion to pass for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. We are now on to the personnel report and administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments for September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the administrative appointments and personnel report as presented.
Mr. Cummings, how do you vote? Thank you. Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion to pass for the approval of the personnel report and administrative appointments.
Thank you. I call for a motion to approve the budget.
Madam Chair.
Oh, that's right. Dr. Robertson.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, my wife texted me and said enough's enough. Put your glasses on.
Put your vanity aside.
Yes. So, thank you, Debbie. Okay. So, um, I'm pleased to announce that you've accepted two of our, our recommendations tonight. One would be Aaron Arnold, formerly Work-Based Learning Specialist in the Office of Technical and Career Education, to be the next coordinator of Work-Based Learning in the Office of Technical and Career Education. Next up, Frederick Franks. You know, there are times when you wanna determine whether your division is distinguished. And I think if you look at the resume of Frederick Franks, um, it is clear that this gentleman could have gone and worked anywhere he wants to work. Former division chief, Na- Naval Criminal Investigative Service, better known as NCIS. He also was a deputy assistant director of Naval Criminal Investigative Service. He was associate deputy director for the FBI in any number of things. And he, uh, he picked us. He's gonna be the next coordinator of security, safe schools, the Office of Security Emergency Management. We're excited to have him join our team.
Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. It's very exciting. Um, that brings us to the budget calendar. Is there a motion to accept the budget calendar as presented? There is no motion to approve the budget calendar as presented.
Because we're hearing whispers about a substitute.
I was gonna make a substitute. Well, we have to get the original on the floor first. Okay. Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Vice Chair Weems.
Pass, pass those down, please. Um, so I, I kinda glossed over this, um, over the weekend, and then I, I looked and, and read in more de- more detail at my lunch break today about this calendar. So my substitute is to adopt the calendar that I'm passing to you. Um, so everything is the same, except for I have striked out the, um, budget workshop number three for January twentieth and the budget workshop nine on March seventeenth. And once we make a motion, I will be glad to discuss my reasoning. I mean, my, once I get a second to you, I'd be glad, second, I would be glad to.
Seconded by Ms. Melnick.
All right. So, um, I just started looking at this, and we, and, and I do appreciate, um, the amount of time that we need and we will spend on the budget. But this is like twice as many budget meetings as we usually have. And if you look at all the workshops, we have different departments coming. And so I've just reduced it by two. It's still three more than we've had in previous years, hoping that Dr. Robertson can maybe combine some of these so that we don't come down for one forty-five minute budget workshop. Um, so that's, that's my whole, um, reason for doing this, is that I think it's just a little bit too many times to come down and for him to combine. I, I briefly talked with him after dinner. And if you wanna add anything, Dr. Robertson, about the feasibility of this?
Yeah. So, um, I, I, I appreciate that offer. And we can absolutely, um, adjust around the loss of those two meetings. What I think is really important, and I'm gonna be a little long-winded here, um, because this board, like every other board, representing a school division or an organization, you know, over the next several months, is gonna have a really difficult task. And unfortunately, there are gonna be those who want to position this board into, well, you have to do this no matter what. We have not faced the budget's outlook that we have in front of us, I think, in my opinion, since two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. And I think what we're trying to do here with the team, and you saw it with Mr. Hopkins tonight, we are going to over-communicate, really with the public, as well as the board. You guys already know, 'cause you lean into the budget documents, you ask all the right questions, you do your own work. But I really wanna lean into the public to let them know that you're, you're gonna have some really hard decisions. And you are going to be exhaustive in the work that you do to gather the information you need to gather so you can make the best decisions for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And they are going to be critically hard decisions. I appreciated Mr. Wakefield tonight's example of his ten dollars. He needed gas in his car and he needed to press his girlfriend. That is exactly what you guys are gonna have to do. And it doesn't go very far. And, and I also appreciate that we continue to see evidence of the number of people who want to work in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. There is no school division in this area, none, that can boast of the staffing rate that we have in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, none. And we are fifty percent larger than our next competitor right next door in terms of staffing. We do value staff. Our board values staff. We know how important staff is. We're gonna do everything we can to ensure that we stretch every dollar to the best possible way to honor our staff and pay for the things we have to pay for. There are things that are going to be outside of the board's control. These meetings, the purpose of these meetings is for the board to really dig down and engage with us on, where are there opportunities for us to make some reductions that won't pull away the world-class offerings that we provide in Virginia Beach City Public Schools? I do not sleep at night. And this is just honest. I do not sleep at night because I know what's coming. And I need everyone to understand, your words matter. And when you, when comments are made, pro or con about staff that don't matter, or we don't, we gotta, we do. We need everybody to say, look, the reality is the reality. It's gonna be very difficult. And this budget calendar represents an exhaustive commitment from my staff to make sure we communicate with the public, we communicate with the board, we give you guys everything you need. And the change here, I honestly, I think is a very respectful change to my staff, that these two dates can come off and we can, we can better utilize the dates that we do have, which are still more budget dates than have ever been, um, used in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, including when we had no money. Ms. Melnick was on the board, Ms. Weems was on the board in two thousand nine, ten, eleven. So... I thought you came on in eleven.
So, before we continue on, I just wanna clarify. So you do feel as though everything can still be accomplished even with this motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Rogers?
Okay, two things. First of all, um, Dr. Robertson, to your comments, um, I, I understand that you want, that we do want our staff to know we value them. I'm just trying to come up with ways where we can show them more. Um, I, having been in the classroom just three years ago, I have tons of relationships with staff. And one of the things that they have said is they don't feel valued, and we want them to. And so that's why when I make those comments, it's not because we don't do it, but that the way we're doing it isn't a way that they necessarily feel it. And again, that doesn't mean that we're terrible, but always change can be good. So, I just wanted to make that comment. But also, I wanted to ask you, um, even though we can do what we wanna do if we eliminate these two, would it be possible to kind of hold those in case we need them dates? You know what I'm saying? Because I would hate to be in the middle of a big discussion that needs to go to possibly one of those dates, and now we've eliminated it. Uh, uh, we, would we be able to bring them back if necessary?
Yeah. So that's a good question. First of all, Ms. Rogers, you're one of the eleven gonna be solving the problem. So my comments were not directed to you.
Okay.
Uh, because you're gonna be one of the solution makers. Uh, but yes. So this is a, as, as you know, we have called meetings before because of things that occurred. So all this means to us is, at this point, we're not planning for January twentieth. That can change during agenda planning on January thirteenth.
Yeah. And I wanna make sure that we don't have to, like, oh, go through the motions of, you know, three people have to ask for the special meeting. That these are gonna be here should we need them. We'll say that we don't. But, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. So I would defer to the chair there.
Um, Kathleen?
Not yet. Let us all speak.
Does that make sense, what I said?
It makes sense. Um, okay. So I, I think, yeah, I think it's just a matter of whether or not this passes in a vote. But, I mean, I, I do think that we can always schedule an extra special meeting if we need to. Um, Mr. Bowen Steele?
Yeah.
This is probably a crazy thought, but is there any way we could possibly do like a budget retreat? No, to maybe get more done than like we did for our summer retreat.
Yeah. So, yes, the answer is yes. There was a time when, uh, the school board did do, uh, January budget retreat. Uh, so the answer is yes. I think the challenge is going to be information overload. And I, I do think a budget retreat in a budget season unlike this one is a good decision. I just think that decisions you guys are gonna have to make are gonna be, doing it in a domino approach, one at a time is probably more appropriate than trying to have a whole day of, of some really complex topics. Because what's gonna happen, uh, it's gonna be actually a set of dominos. Once you make a decision, a domino's gonna fall, and then it's going to create a new pathway. And I think that our, our ability to kind of spread those decisions out in a manner that allows you to make those decisions is gonna be more helpful for you than a retreat. But normally, I, I think a January retreat's a good idea.
Ms. Melnick?
So, I was the only board member who voted against the reduction of two regularly-scheduled board meetings. I thought we did ourselves and the community a disservice this, this past summer when we were without a meeting. We went way too long in between. Um, I wrote down a few things that Dr. Robertson said. He said, "You are going to have a really difficult task ahead of you. You are going to be making critically hard decisions. We're going to over-communicate with the public. We're fifty percent larger than our neighboring division. We wanna honor our staff. And we are really gonna have to talk about where are the opportunities to make reductions." You also said, "Your words matter," meaning the board's words matter. This is probably, in my eleven years, going to be the hardest budget. And to some of my neighboring colleagues here, um, they were thrust into budget planning last year, brand new. And I would imagine there's still a learning curve for some people who are on this board. To reduce some meetings, my husband would, would love it if I could, would, would agree to this. His birthday is on St. Patrick's Day. Um, but I don't see, with everything that's in front of us, how we make cuts and still be accessible to the public the way we should be. We also asked for a pay raise last year, and we got one. So, um, our, our job is to be here and to really go through this budget. I agree with Mrs. Rogers that on the twentieth and the seventeenth, if we're in a position, those could be, you know, to-be-determined dates. But considering what we have ahead of us, um, I don't know how we just arbitrarily get rid of those before we even start the budget process. I think it's unfair to the community. But I am willing to have those as to-be-determined.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, there is, uh, previously said, you know, you talked about difficult tasks, critical conversations, reductions. If I was someone chiming in, you know, listening in, first thing I'd be thinking about, well, can you unpack that more for me, what you're anticipating? Um, and, you know, I think those are the conversations that, you know, that's what first immediately pops to my mind. You know, and I don't think this is like a either-or dichotomy, um, because I do understand if we reduce the meetings, that content just gets loaded on to, you know, other meetings. Um, and so I do think that we would be, you know, still utilizing time to dissect and to understand. And, um, you know, I don't think, I don't necessarily know if we're going to be missing out on critical conversations. But I do think with the way that you're phrasing things, Dr. Robertson, that the anticipations that you have do, the way, I'd kinda trend towards being cautious, proactively cautious. Um, so I do appreciate your, your comments. And, yeah, that's all.
Dr. Green?
Thank you. Um, probably I have a, a unique perspective, because I'm probably the only one up here that has sat on that side and this side during tough budget season. So, Dr. Robertson, you were a principal, and, and I was a director during that timeframe under Dr. Merle, when we had those tough decisions to make. Um, also, I would like to remind my colleagues, one of the biggest responsibilities we were elected for, and one of our biggest jobs, is budget development. That is our, one of our biggest responsibilities, is, uh, budget development. So I hope that, um, you know, we will have the meetings that we need to, to ensure. And believe me when I say, you have not seen times like this with a school division, some of you with budget development. It's going to be tough. It's gonna be a lot of going back and forth with Dr. Robertson, Dr. Robertson in consultation with his staff. Um, and again, we were hired by our constituents. This is the biggest job that we do every year, is budget development.
Mr. Callen?
It should be widely known. But if it's not, budget season is my favorite time of year. And as attractive as the idea is to reduce the thrill that I'd be experiencing in budget season, I'm cautioned by Dr. Robertson's honest assessment that, he didn't use these words, but it's the same message that he conveyed, and that is, it's gonna take some really heavy lifting. And if this is an example of, this time it's serious, then I think we need to leave ourselves room to stay at the helm and do what we need to do in order to position ourselves to at least bring to the public. This is our best effort. Let's do our best. And so I, but I'm cautious, concerned maybe is a better word. You had indicated that this would be greatly relieving on your staff. And I don't wanna dismiss that or diminish that at all. But at the same time, I'm mindful of the fact that this is a time for some serious heavy lifting. And as Mrs. Rogers has made plain... heavy lifting, and as Mrs. Rogers has made plain, there are many people that are involved in this decision-making process, and the consequences or the results of our decision carry a lot of weight. So I'm going to disappoint myself and say, let's meet more often during budget season. Thank you very much for your time.
So I will support your motion, Vice Chair Weems, and I just wanted to point out, this isn't a reduction in meetings. It's still an increase in, it looks to be five. We're going to be doing our first budget workshop in December, our second one in January, our third one would also be in January, and then we would meet every week in February. We'd have one less meeting in March, and then we would vote at the end of March. Generally, we vote at the beginning in March. We start in February. And so I don't think that this in any way is shirking our duties. I think it's efficient. I think that it meets the criteria. The board asked for more detailed presentations. I think we're going to have those. And if more work needs to be done, happy to have a special meeting in addition, but I don't think it's going to be necessary. Vice Chair Weems?
Um, yes, I just wanted to...I'm hearing, kind of sensing, that my colleagues think that I just don't want to come to meetings, and that is not the case at all. This is, like the chair said, five extra meetings. We are still coming four times in February, four times in March. What I want to do is, at some point, we sometimes come down here and no questions are asked, no talk is done during a budget meeting, staff is here. And when I started looking at this, I'm like, we're expecting staff to present pretty much every single week, 10 meetings out of 10 weeks almost. And that is a lot. And then I'm thinking, me as a colleague, and I've been here for a while, but newer folks, sometimes we can't, we need more than six days to digest this stuff. We get out of here on a, you know, Tuesday night with this much paperwork and presentations, and then we're here six days later to start something all-new. So I was trying to kind of give us a breather in there, the staff a breather and us a breather. But of course, if we want to come all 10 times, I will be here. I have not missed a meeting this year. So I will be there, but I was just kind of doing it just out of some...and again, like Mr. Cummings said, it's not reducing our information or our transparency or our communication. Just in one workshop, it might have two departments coming instead of the one, so we might be here for two hours instead of the one hour, you know, whatever. So I was just kind of condensing it so that everybody could kind of not be so demanding.
Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up and make sure, you know, I stated, I definitely don't see the substitute motion as a desire to work less for the public. I definitely hear what you're saying. You're looking at operational efficiency, organizational excellence, bureaucracy, you know, reduction, and seeing how we could best utilize time. I definitely hear what your concerns. I think those are great questions. I also appreciate, you know, you putting forth a substitute motion and spawning more discussion and helping us think critically about this upcoming time. I am going to lean into, you know, the proactive cautious, but I did want to make sure that I stay on the public, that I definitely see what you're saying and appreciate you putting that forward.
Ms. Fulton?
Thank you, Chair Brown. And I'd just like to say to Ms. Weems, it did not sound like that's what you were trying to do, not to make more meetings. I'm stating the same thing. I saw you doing it as operational efficiency, but when you're out in the public, all of us are out in the public, and I do a lot of community things, and the first thing that comes in is the budget. That's what they talk to me about. What are you going to do about this? Why can't we get more information on this? What are you going to talk about? So, and I try to let them know that any well-run organization needs a good budget. So you'd be listening in on when we do these things, and you understand some of the things. And I think with some of the work schedules that most people have, they can't make that one, they'll be able to hear us on other meetings, but I do appreciate your trying to be efficient in this schedule. But it's sometimes the small things that we might miss that other people are listening for. And I think these meetings will allow us, and like they say, you know, to be determined as we move forward in this process. Thank you so much.
Ms. Melnick?
Then might I ask Vice Chair Weems if she'd be willing to amend her substitute motion to leave January 20th and March 17th to be determined? And that way, if the need arises, then with proper notice, we can make sure that that...because we'll have plenty of time.
It's easier to cancel than, not that the special meeting is that hard, but it's easier to cancel.
Okay. Okay, well, then I'll withdraw that and just leave it as my original. Okay, it's easier just to cancel if we're in a good spot?
No, my point being, you could do it to be determined, and there is a potential meeting on there, but if you don't have anything in there, we have to still go through the special meeting process to get the notes out. It's not impossible to do.
Well, that's what I said. I was asking it just to be, those two dates at least, to be left on the table as to be determined, January 20th and March 17th.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. That's fine. I mean, we can always call it extra meeting anyway, but if that will make folks more at ease, I will be glad to amend that, that we will leave those on the calendar to tentatively be used as needed.
I would be comfortable with that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. And that was seconded by Ms. Melnick, so you second that modification as needed?
I do, but I'm just waiting for Regina to update that amended substitute motion.
And then, while Regina's updating that, Ms. Rogers?
Thanks. I just wanted to quickly state, while I've been ruminating on all of this in everyone's conversation, which I totally appreciate, what I keep coming back to is Dr. Robertson talking about the domino effect. And for me, having a domino effect in front of me where I make a decision which is going to lead to other decision, which will lead to another, for me, having, being able to make those decisions, you know, one after the other, you know, each week, for me, is better for my thought process. I think of like the summer slide. After you've been out of it for a while, you forget what you've done. And sometimes between, in between each two weeks, it happens. I forget what we just did two weeks ago, because there is such a load of information, and I want to make sure that I'm remembering each week, we did this decision, which is leading to the next one, which is leading to the next one. And so I feel like having all of that, one right after the other, will be good for me. But I totally get what everyone else has been saying as well.
Seeing no more discussion, we are going to be voting on the amended motion to keep January 20th and March 17th on the calendar as special meetings to be determined or as needed. Moved by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Melnick. The voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The amendment to the substitute motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now on to committee organization and board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? Ms. Rogers?
So this past week, we had the first of the year meeting for the Mental Health Task Force, and I just wanted to say that there's such good work going on there, and we are going towards what our goals will be. But again, there's an incredible group of people that have been assembled, and I am really looking forward to the really impactful work for our staff and students. We've really been discussing both of those, and so I'm excited about being on board.
Mr. Bowen Steele?
Okay. Well, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but I'll find out. I have two things that I want to mention, and I'm not going to elaborate on them tonight. It's the cafeteria meals and discipline, but I'll be reaching out during the upcoming year to expand on that. But I do want to mention the fact that I have spent a lot of time out at Betty F. Williams, and I've had people, educators will say, request that some people visit the school while it is raining. I totally understand we can't redo a new roof, because it's not going to be there that much longer. But if you're willing to come out, I'll treat you to a cafeteria meal, and you can see what the situation is out there.
Tomorrow is the first of this calendar year's, the school year's Governor's School and CSEP Regional Board meetings. I'll be there with Dr. Robertson tomorrow and my colleagues from across Region Two. Is it more, just Region Two, right? And just to remind my colleagues, please visit the Governor's School for the Arts website, look at their calendar of events, and if there's something that you would, that interests you and you would like tickets, please let me know, and we will make sure that you have them so that you can attend. And there are many disciplines, so look at all the disciplines that they offer and let me know.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you. Last week, Mrs. Woodhouse joined me at the first meeting for the Access Foundation Board, and I just wanted to remind our viewing public, our high school parents and students especially, that we have access coordinators in all of our high schools, and they are a great resource as you start going through the college application process, as well as once the new FASA forms open up typically around late fall, they can assist parents and students with filling that out as well and chasing the money for a good college education or for proprietary schools. They help with whatever your student's continuing plan is for after high school. So make that connection with your access coordinator who works very closely with your school counselors.
Thank you. Vice Chair Weems?
Um, yes, tomorrow, the Policy Review Committee will be meeting at 4:00, and Monday, the Audit Committee will be meeting at 4:00. Okay, and so we have no closed session today, so it is 7:52 PM, and we are adjourned.